There we go, red button. Seeing that it's six o'clock, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Enfield Select Board to order. And we're gonna start with approval of the minutes. We have June 5th, both regular and non-public in your packets. Entertain a motion to approve them as a slate unless you prefer to otherwise.
I thought they're well done. I didn't see any problems. I move that we approve them as a slate.
Discussion. Do you know, all in favor?
There is one.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Let's go back.
Page eight, line 370, it said Mr. Courier, Ms. Stewart, said she, I think Mr. Courier's just a typo, but it makes it that confusing.
I'm sorry, which line is it?
370.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, strike Mr. Courier.
I think that's it. Otherwise, fine, beautiful.
Okay. Are you willing to amend your motion in a second?
So amended.
Okay. You're willing to amend it in a second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes unanimously. Thank you. Move down to board reports, starting with Alice.
I have nothing new to report, but Eva's meeting a lot, getting ready for Shaker 7 this Sunday.
Tom, do you have anything?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Do you have anything, Trey? Okay. Do I have enough? Yeah, and I gave my report on conservation last time, so. It's very short. Ed, you're up. Town manager's report.
Right. Real quick, before I get too deep into this, we put a list of the betterment assessments, and it has taxes that haven't been paid yet either on your, on your report. If you look at it, the one on top with a star on it is the one person that's behind on betterments that has not been making payments or trying to catch up. The other three have, so I guess, long story short is, I think we're doing pretty well on keeping up with betterments. Few people are behind, but they are making payments and trying to get caught up. So we'll continue working on it. Moving on from that, staff report. The police department is continuing to try to find police officers, if anybody knows anybody. At the last meeting, I did talk to you about one officer we had in the pipeline that was making a decision whether they wanted to come here or not, and they had chose to go to another location for better pay, so.
Can I ask a quick question? How many officer slots do we have?
We have two.
Open?
Open.
Two open out of... How many are we supposed to have?
We have seven total.
So we have five and we're looking for two, or we have seven and we want nine?
No, we have five and we're looking for two. And then we opened the grounds worker position last week. We have a vacant seats. And so far, we've received one applicant. We'll continue looking for that. Public Safety Building and Whitney Hall projects, both projects really are at the stage where we're releasing the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and fire RFPs. So we'll be waiting for those to come back. On the Public Safety Building, DPW did meet with SW Coal, our geotech engineers, and they dug test pits. I don't have any report on those yet, but they, they did get the test pits dug, and they'll be moving forward with engineering. It appears that we're getting close on the, kind of the final engineering of the site plan. And I have a meeting tomorrow with Pathways Consulting on the topography and boundary surveys, getting ready to go to subdivision. So that should be moving forward soon. And then Bread Loaf came this last week to inspect Whitney Hall. They opened up some walls to figure out angle of the depth. It's, you wondered, it's two by four construction all the way to the roof, which is pretty small for a building that big. But, so they'll be, they'll be continuing working on design. Right now, it looks like construction's gonna begin early December. So I've met with Cleveland Shaw in the library, and we've started talking a little bit about logistics, about packing up the library, moving the library, and we're starting to brainstorm and look for places that we, we might be able to go. So we'll, we'll continue looking for that, and I'll keep you updated as we move forward. Water project on Maple Street, it's going pretty well. It's now completed. Testing being done on the section beyond the old chlorinating shed. And then the section from root floor to the chlorinator is charged, and services on the west side are starting to be connected. Interconnections with the Marshwell and May Street are in the process of being scheduled. So that, that project's continuing to move along well. Also with that, the test well access road has been extended, so we're getting ready to drill our second test well, trying to find a little bit more water. CCTV inspection of the sewer mains is nearing completion, so we're almost done with the, the scoping part of that project, and we'll be putting together plans for what repairs we're gonna be doing. Oak Hill Road Bridge Project is currently underway. The old culvert's been removed, and excavation for the abutments is complete, and footing should be poured Tuesday or Wednesday of this week. So that project's moving forward. Then I have a whole bulleted list of other things that DPW's been working on. Bathing started today on George Hill, and weather permitting will be completed this week, and we'll continue our paving projects. They repaired a water leak near Lovejoy Brook Road and repaired the hydrant in front of Jakes. The DPW Storage Barn out here in the back is nearing completion, so feel free to go take a peek at that. The new chipper should be delivered this week. The RFPs of the flashing lights for enhanced crosswalk units arrived, so we'll be working with DOT to get those installed in the near future. And that's pretty much it on the DPW side. I am working on a policy that we're putting in place for the water sewer guys, so we have an on-call person on the weekends and holidays, so they don't both have to stand by their cell phones all the time. So we're putting that into place really soon, so we'll have someone on call. And then, just wanted to update the board for me. I completed Leadership Upper Valley last week and graduated, so I'd like to thank you again for allowing me to attend that class. It was a very good class, learned a lot about the Upper Valley, and got a lot of really good networking as well. So it's been, it was a good time, and I've learned a lot. And then the Municipal Managers Association of New Hampshire will be having their spring convention this week, so I'll be headed to that Wednesday night for the rest of the week. Look forward to that. That's my report.
Are there any questions or comments?
And where's the enhanced crosswalking?
That's gonna go in front of the school, the cross roof floor, in front of the elementary school.
Awesome. Do we just there?
No, we're just there.
We just did one for starts?
Yeah.
Congrats on Jim getting that hydrant repaired at Ziggy's. Any luck on the one, excuse me, at Jake's? Any luck on the one at Ziggy's?
We're waiting on a contractor, because we're actually moving that one across the street. So that's gonna be a much bigger project, but it is in the pipeline to be done. Instead of repairing a hydrant on the old water line, we're gonna put one on the new one.
Put it on the new water line, yeah.
Sounds nice. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay. There are no communications on our packet currently, business. And since business of the evening, we're gonna go to strategic planning.
Yep, so I invited Russ to come back as we're getting ready for the 23rd of July, which we've set for our board retreat. We thought it would be a, a good idea to go to review some of what we did last time, show you the progress that we've made, putting some of your thoughts, and I guess some of my thoughts together, and then start to prime the hump, if you will, or get some, move forward a little bit on some other, other plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to Russ. Is he here?
Oh, there he is.
I'm having a dog barking problem here, so.
Where are you throwing it? Don't worry about it.
Yeah, so, you know, Ed, I know you and I talked about this, and I think we want, we had a certain goal to get out of this. I'm not sure we're gonna be able to do it in the, the limited amount of time, but I think... So when we meet, we're gonna go right to work. We're gonna rope our sleeves, and we're gonna hit the ground, we're gonna do some exercises, and I gotta really kind of dig into some of these themes a little bit, and really kind of, you know, play around with these ideas. To get there, it would be helpful to have a, like a really solid definition or statement about, like, what, what it is we're trying to achieve. So I took, we took your note, I took your notes, and Ed and I met, and I put them, kind of, I tried to organize it the best I could, and we came up with four themes, and I think, I think you might have got a piece of paper from me that said what these were, yes. Yeah? Did you guys get that? Yeah, okay. You know, so this Public Safety, and Development of Town Culture, Communications and Community Involvement, Facilities Improvement, and Future Sustainability. So looking at those, it's like I want a statement, so. I'm not sure we're gonna have time to craft that statement in too much detail today, but it, I think I have a, I have a set of questions that I can ask you, and have you all just kind of, like, you know, say what you think this stuff is. I'll take good notes. I will then go back and summarize these again, so when we do meet in July, I'll have a statement for each one of these that we can kind of, we can recraft it at that time, but at least we'll, we'll have a little bit of a head start. So, for example, like, Public Safety, right? Ultimately, I'm looking for a statement, and I kind of, I drafted a fake one here just to kind of give you an idea, right? So Public Safety, you know, Public Safety, so I wrote, "We will achieve a standard of numbers, or percentages, or goals of public safety based on improving consistent, consistent with our growth. We will do this through investment, hiring, you know, for whatever outcome you have." So that would be like a statement that I'm looking to create. Again, I'm not gonna have us craft words here in this meeting, but... So I basically have four questions for each of these themes, and these are the questions I wanna ask. So we'll start with Public Safety. For Public Safety, the first question is, define specifically what Public Safety is to you, right? Another question is, what is the ultimate goal that we're trying to achieve? Who will be affected? And that might be obvious here with Public Safety, but who will be affected and why? But if we can get at least the first two questions answered for each of these, that'd be great. So if I ask you to define Public Safety specifically, and I, and I'm, again, I'm not looking for, we wanna put up an intersection, or we wanna, you know, do specific things, but what does, what is Public Safety? And how do you know you've achieved it for your town? So the best way to do this is just, all you've guessed, just start collaborating, and I'll kind of take notes and ask questions as we go. Don't everybody go at once, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. Can I cheat my way through it? Because I, so when I look at this and just think about themes, like, I'm always looking to create, like, uh, not like, to create a high-level framework to guide leadership through the use of smart goals, and to provide a high-level service and value to our stakeholders. That's always what I'm looking for. It doesn't matter which category.
So in other words, Public Safety would achieve a certain level of smart goals? That's what you're saying?
Yeah, I always like, I mean, that's my, my personal tactic, which may not be everyone else's, but I use a lot of smart goals, because it's easy to remember, and it kind of gives me something, because I have to, I like the measurable part. So we're not just like, we like fluffy bunnies, or like, we'd like ten fluffy bunnies, or we'd like thirty fluffy bunnies to, for people, so that they're happier. You know, I'm, obviously...
That's good. So I think that's a good point. What, what, what are those goals? What would you say those goals are?
For Public Safety? So this is me. I feel like New Hampshire state law allocates Public Safety to the fire chief and the police chief primarily, so I try to stay out of it most of the time, and I don't know how everyone else feels. Like, I want Enfield to be safe, that's a very general, and it's my top priority. That being said, I don't have a crime statistic right in mind, or anything of that nature. I don't know how anyone else thinks about it.
Well, I, I would tend to take what you've said, and maybe add a little bit, that I, I think that how we deal with traffic, particularly as it moves through the community, is a part of Public Safety also.
Yeah?
You know, I think, how do we tell when we've achieved Public Safety when the people who live here, our citizens, feel that this is a safe place to live and raise a family? That people wanna come here because it's, it's, it's a good place to be.
Right, and I think that you said that the last, that's good. So when you say, so creating a safe place for families, we don't have the stats right now, and, and one of those would be, how do we deal with traffic? What other elements might be in Public Safety? So there's the police and the fire. What other elements might be in there that you would all wanna, like, just, you know, have in this bucket?
Ambulance is, is part of our team. And I think to a certain extent, you know, we haven't had anybody at the public beaches to do safety, but that is a consideration, you know? How do we keep people safe in our public recreation places? And what kind of policies do we have in place to ensure that when we hire, and when we have volunteers, that they conduct themselves in a safe and becoming manner? Particularly around children, and the most, most vulnerable. I worry the most about people who can't defend themselves.
That's good. Anything else from anybody else?
I think Public Safety also involves a good deal of communications from those representatives that we put in place to advocate for the Public Safety. And I would wanna see some fairly strident advocacy for making sure that we continue what I think right now is a pretty good record of communicating to the public, and I would certainly want us to be able to continue that moving forward from each of our safety departments, police, fire, and ambulance, and anyone else responsible for Public Safety, especially as we also wanna incorporate things like the rec department, and their responsibilities for Public Safety, and the DPW, and they have responsibilities for Public Safety. So I think it's something for each of the municipal departments to address, and to stay in touch with the public, and to find a way to communicate with the public on their attitudes towards Public Safety.
Excellent.
Drailing off of what Tracy's saying, I think maybe one of the things we should be looking at is a conversion from reaction to prevention, and that, that crosses all departments. It's not in a particular silo, right? So it could be, you know, we wanna have zero OSHA violations, right? Like, that's a really easy one, and I think it's one that everyone should have. Do we always have it? I don't know. So, you know, I don't think, that's one that I don't think there's any tolerance for. You wanna start off with a zero goal. Other places, you know, you might wanna say, we would like to reduce our track, you know, have a goal of having less than X number of tra- traffic accidents a year. But I think that, again, falls back to the police, like, having them set those goals and make the measurements.
Well, I wanted to push that a little bit, and I, I hope we do this in all four of these, but, you know, we're, we're focusing Public Safety around the emergency services, but I'd like you guys to think a little broader, too. You know, let's look at how does DPW affect Public Safety? You know, clearing roads, clearing roads. What public health things are we looking at? So, you know, how do we get a little bit bigger than police, fire, and ambulance?
And the rec department, which has a good bit of contact with the public, and should be responsible for Public Safety as well.
I mean, the library, even though they're not under our assets, they're good partners for Public Safety. They see a lot of folks, and they have, you know, nice elderly program, too. So there's a lot of opportunities there for us to, to take a look at all areas that we do.
I think that's something good to think about when we're thinking, what is Public Safety?
I mean, to me, it's everything from the flip and fall to hiking safely and making good choices, you know? About, you know, going to the mountain.
Sounds to me, what I'm hearing is, is that it's almost like you wanna create a culture of Public Safety that isn't, it's almost like it's gonna be, like, a theme for everybody. And, and I don't know if you guys have these metrics now, but maybe there's, maybe there's a set of metrics that you, you end up targeting eventually about what you're trying to do. But, Ed, is that what you're saying? Like, it should be, it's thematic, it's really not just specific?
You wanna be a town, and to me, this is just me, as I'll speak with my parent hat on. I have a nine-year-old. I wanna live in a town where I can let my child walk down the street, walk next door, with reasonable expectations set in place ahead of time about wandering into traffic, and know that if somehow she trips, falls, stumbles, somebody's most likely gonna grab her, right? Like, if I let her go in the park, I can let her walk to the library in Enfield, and know that she's safe.
So I think, like, when I think about Public Safety, I kind of was thinking about, like, Public Health and Safety as one, like, very interconnected. And so I think, like, you know, there's traffic calming, for sure, is a big concern, because I live right downtown, and it's problematic there. And then also, you know, making sure that, you know, safe sidewalks that people aren't gonna trip on, and, like, not litter-filled areas, where people are gonna feel comfortable, you know, letting their kids run, like, there's not gonna be trash everywhere. Those are kind of the things that I think about when I think about Public Safety. I think I think about it more of like a Public Health and Safety.
I think that's a very good point. Russ, we also have some department heads here. I didn't know if you want them to weigh in or not?
Sure, absolutely.
I don't know if any of you have anything to add, but feel free. I just wanted to make sure the department heads knew that they could pitch in as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not just the select board talking. So feel free to pop in whenever, and we can keep talking up here, so.
I, I think you, uh, Public Health and Public Safety mean actually two separate things, because you're gonna be so overwhelmed with, it's gonna be so... There's so, they're a lot different in, in a lot of aspects, and two, and the other is like, when you talk about, you know, when we did this training before, and we're talking, going out so many years and this and that, the one, you know, if you're talking Public Safety, law enforcement side, that trajectory is gonna be so different than your, your Public Health trajectory. And I think if you put them together, they become, you cloud each other, you know? Or it's just too much, too over-enveloping, you know? Like, I agree with you about, like, Public Health, you know, trash, roads, you know, sidewalks being uneven, this and that. I, I'm not saying I disagree with that kind of stuff, but then you talk about that, and then we start talking about the trajectory of, say, the police department in drug cases, or even, you know, the building and stuff like that. You, you, they're kind of, they're so different that you, you know, I say Public Safety.
I think they'll be all breaking down under it. We're gonna have, like, well, PS4 here, and there's actually five or six total buckets that everything's gonna fall in, but I agree with you. I don't think you have them all under one goal, but I think under Public Safety, you have Public Health and maybe Emergency Services or something.
Maybe it's that the themes cross these goals.
Yeah, I think that might be more like, things that we think about for each goal.
Because I, when I think of Public Health, that's, to me, is part of a discussion on Town Culture, which is the next goal, I think.
So why don't we, I think, so I think this, I think we've got, I feel like we've got an overarching theme enough to kind of draft a summary of this, that we can blow up when we get together. Let's go, let's go to the next one, if it's okay, Development and Town Culture. So I remember specifically you all, you know, this is, that this is the place to live, right? This is a, this is the place where we take care of people. This is the place where you wanna raise a family, we want families to come here. That's, that's kind of what I've heard. So if you just define this a little bit more for me, that would be great.
I think this is also an area that, that tends to lead to a fair amount of disagreement within the community. There are many people who feel that what we need is a place where we can remain connected, let's say, to nature, that is a, a sort of peaceful, place where we don't have the stresses of overdevelopment. And then there are people who feel we really need to encourage growth and development so we can support all the things we wanna do. And they're both pretty noble causes, I think, but they don't always work hand in hand. And I think that's one of the tough things a select board has to deal with.
So how do you resolve that? I mean, it sounds like half the, a lot of people would love the idea of growth, encouraging growth for the sake of, for the sake of some goal, and you're saying some people wanna stay exactly the same, so how do you resolve that? Or what is the, like, what is the direction you take?
I think the master plan had some good language for us on this. This is just my personal opinion. I wonder if we don't look back at that, and at some of those guiding principles that are in there, and then really rely on those, because they did that work, that was collaborative work, that we limited to just the input from the five of us, and what we can remember that everyone gave us. So data, I feel like there was a lot about the culture and how to melt people's desires, and, you know, be respectful of giving value for money, and being respectful of place.
I'll jump in here, too, and I don't disagree. And I think we should, before the 23rd of July, we probably should go back through the master plan, so we, we understand that, but I'm also gonna push the boundaries a little bit again, and say, you know, as you guys as leadership, you know, what's the culture that we're wanting to build? And where do we wanna go? And we know there's some key feeding priorities, and there probably is in a lot of these different things that we're gonna be talking about, but we're trying to build this overarching plan of what we're going to do. So, you know, what's the culture we're really looking for? And it doesn't have, I guess it doesn't have to be from one border to the other. We can, and the master plan did this, is we're gonna do this in this area, and this in this area, but we still have an overarching culture of the town.
Just to remember what you all said, you said, "Create a culture of a loving place," right? I mean, allow for aging in place, attract families to the town. I mean, I don't, maintain a quality of life, right? Calmness. So that's, I mean, that's not saying growth or not growth, that's just saying, you know, like, it's like a, there's a certain value you're trying to get out of this definition. So, I mean, like, it's, it's really kind of squishy and hard to define, but like, is that, is that just it? A place, a place for families to feel comfortable and grow their family? We take care of each other, and this is a place where you connect at a deeper level? I mean, I mean, I think of, you know, we, we could probably think of towns in our state that, you know, you, that has a personality to them, like, you know they have a personality to them, right? If I, if I said a town that you might be familiar with, you kind of, if you spend any time that you'll kind of know, know what that's about. I don't know, I'm just trying to identify this a little bit more, without saying we're gonna grow at a certain pace, or we're gonna open up, you know, elderly homes, or we're gonna, you know, that's not what we want here, right?
Well, so that's like interesting, because what you're describing to me conjures a picture of a town that I go into and I get a vibe, I'm like, oh, this is like this kind of a town. But that's usually a product of having some kind of, like, plan for, like, what buildings are gonna look like, and like, thematically how the town looks, and I don't really feel like that's our thing.
I mean, you could do that.
I think having programs that support the different groups, so you have programs out there that support the elderly so they can stay in place. And all, you know, all the recreation programs, obviously, for families are great.
Okay.
But still, I mean, I think you, you mentioned the vibe you get going through certain towns, right? So think about the vibe you get as you drive through Enfield, and it varies significantly depending upon what street you ride down.
Yeah.
So think about that. Why is that? Well, some, some are more nicely maintained, but some have just been established in a more sensible fashion. Some are just there because nobody knew what else to do with that piece of property. And I'm not mentioning any particular places.
No, but I know any of them.
But that, that's crucial. And where, where, who makes that decision? Ultimately, the taxpayers, the voters. But we have to be able to give them alternatives. You wanna go this through? You want to go this direction or this direction? And I, I think that's one of the things the master planning process does. People can agree with parts of it, they can disagree with parts of it.
I mean, I'd like to see large building projects and density consolidated in a small downtown area. And I would like to see more workforce and Asian place housing. I know that is my personal feeling. I want to see people building on water and sewer where we can support it and where we have the infrastructure.
Right. And then, you know, you can talk about zoning, right?
Yep.
And zoning has a profound impact upon, uh, the price of homes.
Yes.
You know, if we have five-acre zoning, three-acre zoning, half-acre zoning. If you say half-acre zoning to some people, they, they faint that away. And, and there are some areas where maybe that is the most sensible thing.
All right, and I just, this is a newer map, so anybody who hasn't had a chance to take a look, uh, this is a great tool for us to have in meetings. So just wanted to call your attention to that as we kind of think, you can all, uh, tell where downtown is with all the smaller lots, uh, and most we know, um, of our lots often are in zones they don't conform to. So obviously, that's not our purview tonight, but just as a helpful tool for us, we think.
Where many of our smallest lots around the lakes.
Yep.
So I just want to try to clarify this a little bit in my head and so I apologize if I'm not aligned with you on this. But is what you're saying, so we, we kind of went from this is a great place to live, the, you know, that vibe, whatever that was, to zoning. So is, is, uh, I mean, I think zoning probably is part of that, it's some of this stuff. But is what we're talking about, and I might be wrong about this, is what we're talking about is our brand? Are we talking about the brand of Enfield? Like, are we talking about the components that, uh, we delivered as citizens?
So I guess as, under development and town culture, I'd like to be able to say Enfield has clear and easy to use something. I know it's not necessarily true right now, but that is something. And we have, um, employees and board members who are willing to help you, guide you through the process in a way that is welcoming and kind and, and not vindictive and unfair, right? Because there are neighboring towns that are very hard to work with. They shall remain nameless. And I think, um, we've had some businesses come before some of these boards recently and we've learned a lot. And there's always, you know, continued improvement we can do. But I'd like to be a town that at least gives people a chance to be heard and does it in a way that's kind and welcoming. And maybe if you don't have a good idea, it's not a good idea.
I think that pushes in the right direction where Russ was trying to guide you a little is let's get away from the zoning and the land use portion of this and what's that culture that we're looking for? That we want to be open to working with people, that we make those processes easy. What's the culture you feel when you're here? I know that Lisa was talking about programming, is that, you know, recreational programming, different things that really make the town feel with what it is when you're living here or visiting here? You know, you do get a sense of that from the way the town's laid out and as you drive through. But I think there's a lot more to it than just the development component.
We have a town plan. I mean, you do have, you, you do have these, you know, you have these things in place now. You probably, whatever we do might guide us towards shifting that. But, um, so I, I'm going to use my language here. It sounds to me like, like, almost like you all can identify what this culture is. You're here for a reason. You, 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 you want this culture. You're part of that culture, right? But other people don't know what that is. So it might be kind of articulating what that is in a clear, in a really clear way. And then u- using that for the planning, using that for whatever planning is going to go on, but also let people know about it, like, how do we, you know, how do we live that, you know, in a better way? So we're not going to resolve this, I don't think, tonight, I guess, you know. Does anybody else have any more ideas about the, the cultural component?
Um, I do. Yeah, I'd just like to, in just in the interest of disclosure, Jane is my mother. Small town life.
Right. So one of the things that's been talked in various meetings I've been in is a walking downtown so that where we have limited parking, um, can we create a culture of walking and supporting the businesses down there? Enfield's geographic center, we, we don't have a common lifeline, you know, where, or whatever. We have an area in Methodist Hill, we have Enfield Center, we have the Main Street area and the Miracle Half Mile, I'll call it. So, um, if you support your businesses down there, then you have places to go, to go out to dinner or, or whatever, retail. So something along that line. But then I thought, what I hear here is, um, we need to have intentional activities that help us meet each other. Because people who are friends tend to be able to compromise more. And we want, you know, a town where people can respectfully disagree and still live with each other, um, and bring out the best of our town, not the worst. So I think, um, I'm going to just use the example that a fire department just did their thing. That gave people a chance to bring their kids, see what was going on. I know the police department has done different things. But it also shows your citizens that you're more than the person that shows up for bad events, that, um, that you're prepared, you care about your community and that, um, we should value you because you do a nice job for us. And I feel like starting with young kids, that's important, but any age kid. And it also gives them ideas for what they might do when they get older. But it, it connects us all. Um, you start seeing faces and start making new friends locally and then utilizing what's offered here and maybe adding to it.
I'd like to add, I guess, I, I said again, probably for the zillionth time to Valley News today, we should have a culture of service and we're a service organization at the end of the day. The town is a service organization and a boundary. So we should, in every aspect, be it on committees, be it our employees, have a service mindset that is kind of welcoming. I'm not saying you need to be a doormat, but I think everybody needs to approach it from that kind of service mindset. And we're in it together. It's, you know, sometimes there's compromise and navigation. But I, I'd like to see that welcoming and service mindset across all of our areas.
Awesome. Good. Well, it's, it's, it's becoming somewhat clear. So I'm going to, I'm going to take some of these notes and draft something with this and we'll just, again, you'll get it before we get there, we'll make it, we'll make adjustments. We're not trying to solve anything right now. We're just trying to like, like the first, like, just identify what it is with, that we're trying to shoot for or start playing with. So if everybody's good with that, move to the next one. Is that okay?
Yes.
Communicate.
I think we already have. I think the second one blends very well with the third one and they complement each other. On the third one, before we get started, I want to say, I'm the one that told them to put including economic development, but I'd like to change that to including others outside of Enfield. It doesn't necessarily have to be in Enfield, but I think as we talk communications and community involvement, we should be talking about how we're going to communicate with each other inside of town and how we're going to communicate with people outside of town.
Well, along that line, I agree. And I think it's important for us to speak of what Enfield's role within the greater Upper Valley is. How does Enfield fit and cooperate with other townships? Uh, not only our own events and inviting them to here, but also participating in their events so that we are really part of the Upper Valley community, which really broadens everyone's ideas and ideals as to things to do and places to go.
I, I like, I like to tell people when we have a lot going on, that it's not a competition when we have a lot going on. Come spend the day in Enfield, right? I think that it's a really important thing to be able to say to people, we have enough that you could spend your entire day here. You can come to an activity, you can go for a hike and then you can grab lunch. Or like, have some groceries and have a picnic. We have a lot of great opportunities. Uh, and, you know, and while you're out, leave your money here. Because that's part of supporting our businesses, right? And the folks who live here, at the end of the day, is making it so it's desirable to in- invest, even if it's a small amount in Enfield's, uh, each time and company.
No, I think that's very well put. Um, and I, I think that communication with the sort of external community is, is crucial. But maybe even more crucial sometimes is the internal communication, uh, within the town to make sure that different disparate groups, uh, and pressure points are, are getting the full message of what's going on and, and what we are doing and what our beliefs are.
And I think that we've started touching on more and more avenues of disseminating information. And eventually you hit the point where you've got too many and people don't know where to look. So defining, I, I guess, defining the avenues that we consider our priority avenues and telling people, this is where you're going to get your information. And it'll be, have to be multiple formats. Like, we know in order to hit everybody, you pretty much have to send a mailer, but you can't do that all the time. And it's not expeditious, but we know, for example, for elections that we typically have to. So I think defining, maybe having a chart of some kind that, you know, staff establishes of this is the nature of the problem and this is kind of the avenues we'll take. I, I, I say that out loud because I often have been doing a project and I'm like, okay, I'm going to hit here, here, here. Sometimes it's easier to just have a list and be like, yep, these are the ones I need to do for them. You guys have done an awesome job, I think, with, um, the Code Red and, um, really communicating on the sewer project. The sewer project internally, I'm sure, is very frustrating when things don't go as planned. Um, and externally, I know people feel the pressure, but they're also very thankful to see an update. And that can only get better. I think, you know, as more people learn where the updates are and how to use them. The other piece of feedback I got recently from quite a few folks, um, how happy they are with the sign, which I, I'm thrilled about. I, I didn't, I didn't, you never know, right? The sign is very new, so. But yeah, there's, and I think the sign is easy to read and so that's a credit to the employees. So the, looking for those different avenues that are, I guess, available and.
Yeah, so I'm hearing, um, we need to figure out avenues or channels of communication that are appropriate to reach the right people, you know? Part of that might be creating experiences so that people can get information that way. When you talk about, um, Ed, maybe you could help me with this. You talk about outside communication, people. So what's the significance of that? Is that, is to draw people into the community for our businesses? Or what's the, like, what, and what's that look like when you say outside the community, communicating outside the community?
I, I think I'll, I'll steal from John for a second. So my interpretation is, it's twofold. It's one, to draw people in to engage in our activities and our businesses. And two, we want them to see that Enfield is a vibrant and a welcoming community and we want them to invest in Enfield. So consider bringing your business, actually locating your business here, locating your family here. So we have that two-part, like, you can spend some of your time with us or you can spend all of your time with us.
And the internal communication is about reaching people, still getting them involved, helping them be part of committees and, you know, the, the fire department event, like, you know, whatever, whatever, like, to just to reach them in, in town so that they're engaged, yeah? Is that, that what's that about?
Yeah, yeah. And we have, we have things that have a regular cadence, like our newsletter is very good, Elisa does it. Uh, it has a monthly cadence and it's a reliable source of information. That being said, you're not going to put a water main outage in that, right? So just looking at those, what is our cadence, what's our, um, audience look like? And then defining, and it's very, very hard to reach a certain subset, no matter where you are. Some folks just don't have the internet and they're never going to. And I'm not trying to pick on news media, but I think print media has gotten more challenging and they don't have room for every little nitpicky thing, right? So it's just figuring out how we can hit, because I don't want to just only hit the internet savvy. What's, we're not going to be on TikTok probably, right? Like, it's, we're probably not going to be dancing and making videos. But so how do we reach the maximum number of people in an efficient way?
Yeah, I think, um, uh, internal communication to me means like, when I was, we had like a little town hall when people were first running, two different people were saying like, what are you going to do about the poor communications from the town? And so I think a goal would be, you know, that we could make everyone in the town feel, or most of the people, not everyone, most of the people feel very informed about what's going on. Just want information. I think we're already going a long way to improve it, um, but, you know.
Jane?
I think that there's a lot more communication going on, but your responsibility as a citizen to access that is what's missing, getting that connection. So, you know, if you don't go and read the newsletter, somebody put time and effort into it, but you're not getting that information. Somehow we have to change the mindset a little bit of, a lot of the stuff you're saying isn't happening is, but perhaps you haven't accessed it.
I think that's partially our job too, though. When people say to me, and I've had this conversation with Ed, about like, hey, I didn't know we were going to have this outage. I'm like, it's done in like five places for over a month. Um, and I'm not trying to down, and I, so I'm like, what do you like to use for medium? And they were like, hey, I like getting text messages. And I was like, do I have news for you? Um, so some of it is just us as ambassadors and maybe we need to offer. I don't know if we make like a quick list, right? Of every way to get information in Enfield and people can pick or just something that we have as a tool for ourselves. But, uh, and obviously the department has, and the employees that interact with folks are big. Um, so maybe it's as simple as being like, hey, we have a newsletter, hey, we have an email list. Code Red, I think, I mean, I'm going to say Code Red is your, like, at a minimum, please do Code Red. If you haven't, go to Google, type in Enfield NH and Code Red and then sign yourself up by your address. There's my picture tonight.
Yeah, you will instantly feel very communicated.
Yes.
Do you, do you think people in Enfield are less engaged with the communication for, um, I mean, less so than other towns? Or is it like, it's just reaching the people that, we're just not reaching them effectively? So in other words, uh, like, I, so I, I live in Sandwich, right? My wife's involved in all kinds of stuff. I don't, because I, because I do this for work, I don't want to be involved, right? I show up with her on her arm when we do something, but that's her thing, right? I don't pay attention to what, you know, the, the rumors are or what's going on downtown. I mean, I hear about it, but I'm not like, I, I choose not to be engaged. I don't think that's any different than anywhere else we would live. And I guess the question is, is Sandwich doing a lousy job reaching me? Or is it, or is it just that I'm not engaged and you want me to be more engaged?
You can't make people engage, right? In anything, I know, in work, in churches and social organizations in town. So people get the most engaged when something goes really wrong or it's really expensive, right? I think we can all agree on that. So unless you can make everything a big show, which I don't propose and we do, you know, not everything in life is a rock concert or exciting. So we're going to have to assume that people have personal responsibility and do the best we can to make stuff available in a way and, and be adaptable. I think we have to, you know, consider what kind of, we've done a lot of pivots. I think this is Zoom tonight, or not Zoom, Teams, as we are on now. Um, having Owl is a credit to one of the pivots that we've done in being more available and accessible, uh, having YouTube. So just continuing to have that culture of wanting to improve and wanting to provide access. And then being willing to not criticize like, oh, you didn't know, but say, oh, hey, you know what? You might not have known, but you can get this here, here and here, what would work best? So that we're doing it in a way that's welcoming and nice and inclusive. Uh, and not everybody wants to stare at their squawk box all day. I actually, for all I spend on it, I don't actually want to. So I think we have to be mindful, you know, maybe it's some things go out through the library.
Well, and I think you hit it earlier, that I think this bucket's really about how communicative do we want to be? And then as we dig down into performance metrics and goals, it's what do we want to do and how do we define it? And I think that's really the focus behind this.
Okay. All right. So I, how much time, how much more time do I have?
We're about out.
So the facilities and improvement, future sustainability, infrastructure, I know, that, Ed, say, 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 like, if you could define that, well, how would you define that?
I would define it, just to help move this along, is what I'm, what I think we're looking for here is, you know, we've done a lot of work on the facilities committee, those types of things. But I think we start having discussions about, it goes with safety, but how are we going to maintain our sidewalk? How are we going to do our winter maintenance? How do we want some of these things to roll out? And what do we, what do we look like for goals on? We've talked building maintenance, but, you know, there's a, there's a lot of different things to think about on the level of service we're going to provide in our facilities and what we're going to do.
Yeah, I think we've made enormous progress in this area, uh, not only in in how we're thinking about it, but in what we're actually doing about it. But I think you're right, and sometimes the small things like sidewalks are what catch people's attention. Um, cause they're visible and, you know, they're dealt with on a daily basis. Um, but, you know, I'm pretty confident that this is an area that, that is gonna be more accessible to many of us even, than some of the more abstract areas. It's, it's there, it's a real thing.
I'd like to see us have a documented facilities plan. Uh, so I'd like to have an inventory of buildings and spaces and major things like, and have things be cycled, right? So I'm not saying you have to, but I, an evaluation point where you hit it, you evaluate it, and you say, you know what? We, we have this on a five-year painting plan, but it looks great. And you make a decision at that point to pass it over, so that you're constantly doing those of that. But you don't have to go to every single room every single year. If you have a major incident, you put in a ticket, right? Uh, I think, you know, having a plan to evaluate the roofs and do those things. You know, maybe look at energy upgrades or ha- ha- assign it, even if you're just assigning it out to the energy committee. Uh, also, same with sidewalks, right? Like, do you put them on a cycle because we know they're very expensive? So, you know, how are we documenting? We're not picking the road based on, well, that one looked bad. I'm not saying that's what they're doing, but do we have a documented plan that we're following and making these evaluations in a meaningful way?
I think the other thing we can add here, and that's part of the reason I added the sustainable infrastructure there is, what does our water system growth or lack of growth look like? And what is the sewer system expansion or lack of thereof? What do we wanna do? What are we looking at for the long-term future? So I think those are, those are big things to be looking at, talking about. I think it's a really, really big bucket we'll be diving into.
I mean, sewer, to me, I'd like to use eighty-five percent of our capacity to limit and max, right? Cause eighty-five, you never wanna run over eighty-five on most things in life. So to me, that's, like, you could put an easy cap on that. The water, you might have more options, cause Enfield happens to be blessed with more aquifer options. Although we know you don't just magically get water when you drill a hole, so. Um, but I think there's a lot we could do there to give some really hard numbers. The other one you and I talked about was, um, like, on plowing. You know, what is the level that citizens will tolerate? Is it one inch on the road and we say you live in your cancer, you're gonna live? Or, you know, one inch over X number of hours? Or do we say we want the roads completely black and salted and perfect, right? So, uh, I mean, I know what I love, right? Everybody loves a nice, easy-to-walk-on road, um, that you aren't gonna slide off of. But what can people tolerate in terms of taxes and value?
Yeah, it's a cost service ratio that we need to discuss.
All right, so this, this one, Ed, I gotta help me out here, but this feels, this one feels like this, the strategy is to create a sustainable infrastructure for the future of the town based on some other set of metrics that you, or some other set of growth metrics that you wanna do. Right, I'm summarizing that correctly?
Yeah, maybe adding in there a little bit service levels of what levels of service we're gonna provide in these areas, but.
To me, if we're set, if we agree with Department Head on a service level, level, then they operationally would make the decision on how they implement that service level and whether we encircle back through with the budget and we find out, can we afford it? And maybe we find out, okay, your service level's a little lower, maybe it could be higher.
And this is another one of those dovetails, cause I think this dovetails right in the public's safety if we're talking about plowing roads and other service level areas are gonna. So a lot of these will overlap each other.
Yeah, it's all, it's all integrated, right? With that, that's the challenge, is trying to pick up, pick them apart and can combine them together and. Um, I, so I feel like I have, Ed, I feel like I have enough to, to craft some, some statements with you on this to start us out.
Yep.
Um, so, any questions from anybody? Any questions about, um, more questions from anybody?
I have none. Alice, John, Trigil, you good? Looks like we are in good shape, so we'll look forward to seeing you.
Yeah, I look forward to seeing you all too on a Sunday. Should be good.
Good evening, Russ.
All right, thanks, I appreciate it, see you up there.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to compensation study kickoff. Rick and Karen Campbell will be joining us as well.
So, I saw Rick up there.
Be on TikTok and dancing like you're talking about. I, I'd pay to see that.
Wow, listen, we have a dinosaur costume, Rio.
So what I wanted to do, I invited, um, Rick and Karen to come there from PayPoint HR, the consulting company that we've hired to do the compensation study. We've been working with them, they've done some meetings with staff already, but I, I invited them to come to this meeting really just to introduce themselves and kinda go through the process that they're gonna use, so you guys understand how this is gonna be done and what they're gonna be doing. So, that I'll turn it over to Rick.
All right, great, thank you. Um, and I don't do TikTok, though, he's our dance, so I just, just get that off the, off the table right away.
I don't know if we can continue.
Um, so yeah, the, a little bit about PayPoint HR. We do classification compensation studies, you know, across the country. Tremendous number of certainly communities, uh, in the past several years in New Hampshire. Um, and in full disclosure, I was actually taking notes on this today on, um, right now, we are working with three communities in, in New Hampshire, uh, with Enfield being one of those three. So the other two being Merrimack County and, um, we were just awarded a contract for Goston. But been working for different, particularly the different, uh, counties in New Hampshire, so familiar with the area. Um, most of the titles and the, some of the unique aspects of Enfield, we already have a, a good understanding of. But what we have found certainly over time is that every organization is unique. And as part of our methodology, um, one of the things that we strive to do is engage employees as part of this process. Um, A, because they know more about what they do and can just make the results better, having that kind of information directly from the people doing the work. Um, but also it helps to set expectations, uh, you know, at the very beginning on what to expect from a, a study. So one of the things that we communicate to employees during briefing sessions, a little while, a few weeks ago, was that, um, a reasonable expectation for a study like this is there'll be a group of job titles that are paid below market. For job titles that are paid right in alignment where they should be. And then other job titles that are paid better at Enfield than other places. And I emphasize the word just paid better, cause it's just means certain positions have been more highly valued at Enfield that does not necessarily mean overpaid. And it's important to communicate that message, in, in our opinion, uh, right up front, uh, simply because, you know, the worst thing you could do as a result of the study is, you know, make a bunch of promises and then not deliver. Um, you know, that just kills morale, and it's actually far better to not do a study at all. But, you know, again, having said that, so we've set the expectations. We've also communicated to employees that there'll be job titles in each of those three categories. How many, you know, is going to, at the end of the day, be a strategic question for, um, Enfield and where you wanna position yourselves relative to the market with respect to compensation. Um, but again, that's just one of those things that we presented to, uh, employees, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page in terms of, um, setting expectations. But now our process, and what, pretty much everything that I'm communicating to you, um, most of, I should back up. Most of what I'm communicating to you, uh, is communicated exactly with, uh, employees. Uh, there will be, uh, the result slide, the next two slides after this. While, you know, we're happy to communicate this to, certainly to employees, um, you'd have to more read, read between the lines. Um, and the only reason why I say that is part of, you know, again, our process is, is trying to be, you know, transparent and open so that the information that elected leadership and administration and employees have are pretty much the same. That, um, really, the way we think of this is an, an exercise of gathering facts. And it's, you know, coming in, being an outside third party, we have no vested interest in the process other than to do, you know, a very good job for everyone. But that, that, the results can be believed. But without further ado, the, the methodology that we've presented to employees is that we use three yardsticks. Uh, the first yardstick is they're highlighted in orange, and that's the external market. And that really boils down to what other organizations are paying for the same work. Uh, the next slide will cover a little bit more about how those organizations, um, at least at, at this juncture, have been looked at to see, you know, what would be a, a fair group of comparators. Um, but that's, that's a common way, uh, many organizations look at, uh, at helping to understand fair pay. The problem with just using that as the only yardstick is, again, going back to the, the statement I made earlier about there's going to be some job titles that are more highly valued at Enfield. Um, it doesn't necessarily, again, mean overpaid. Um, one of our very first clients, um, they have over a hundred parks in their city. It's a very small city, but that's something that they valued. Um, if you relied exclusively what other organizations pay for parks and rec, you know, the answer for them would have been, there's misalignment. But using other metrics, you know, to help, you know, uh, do a checks and balance, if you, if you will, at the end of the day for them, you know, they were perfectly in alignment. So that's, leads me to the second yardstick, there is the org structure. And that's really, you know, the, uh, also a very common way for organizations to, uh, pay, uh, job titles and then therefore individuals is, you know, the person at the top typically makes the, the most money, but not, it doesn't always happen. Uh, particularly when other factors are considered, um, on, you know, on down. And that's, that's not an atypical method. And then the third yardstick that we use is, uh, looking at knowledge, skills, and abilities. Um, and that's really engaging employees to tell us, you know, all the details of their job. Um, based on several met- metrics, um, like independence, the complexity of a job, the financial and supervisory responsibilities, you know, everyone has. You can create a hierarchy based on, on that as well. One of the things that, that makes PayPoint unique in a lot of ways is, uh, not only the employee engagement, uh, aspect of things, but also, you know, we combine these three different yardsticks, yardsticks, um, do, you know, statistical analysis, correlate the, the data to present what is fair pay for Enfield. Now, it's gonna look different than those other two communities that I just mentioned in, in New Hampshire, just cause, again, there's unique aspects um, to Enfield that, i- as part of the process needs to be, you know, taken in consideration. Um, and it's gonna also be true for them. So that's i- in a nutshell, kind of our process and methodology. Uh, we've already gone through the process of, uh, again, engaging employees, having them fill out a job questionnaire. Um, it's, I believe it's something at this time, stage, you know, into supervisors for, for their review. And, um, within the next, you know, couple of weeks, you know, we expect, you know, that data to become in, uh, come into us and allow us to do, uh, analyze, you know, that piece of information. Um, in the meantime, here, hopefully, uh, relatively soon, we can start with the external market and start asking, you know, similar communities, what do they pay? And that'll, more or less, uh, provide us with all the different pieces of information to start, you know, analyzing the data. The next slide. So as I mentioned, for comparators, um, we do another, and you'll hear, you know, my background, my PhD's in chemical engineering. So there's a lot of math and, uh, for better or worse than when I, when I talk. But, um, if you can bear with me, um, hopefully, it'll, I, I can, it'll make sense for everyone. Um, so what we do as, as a first cut is, um, we look at basically the socioeconomic factors of similar organizations, you know, in, in this case, across New Hampshire. Uh, so we look at things like the cost of living, uh, labor force participation rate, household income, and the like. And at the end of the days, find organizations that, for the most part, look similar. That's the easiest way of saying, you know, ranking where you are relative to similar organizations. Um, but there are exceptions to, to that. And one of the big exceptions where we would include an additional, uh, municipality, for example, is while their unemployment may be much higher or their housing price may be hu- much, you know, lower or higher, whatever the case may be, but you've lost a number of employees to that, you know, particular municipality. Or you're tracking a, a number of employees from that. Then that is, you know, just by definition, a, a natural comparator. So we would include those as well. Um, so the process, you know, we, we've gone through that and, uh, provided that to the project team. The list of comparators that you see there below is, uh, what, again, on the first blush that, you know, we've come up with. Um, the ones that, you know, we've excluded, and that's kind of the one highlighted there in red is, you know, the city of Boston. Just, again, that's just a very simple example, that is just substantially different. Um, but there's other ones that we found over the process of, of doing this, where there was, you know, a, a difference. Um, and so it, it was our recommendation not to include those. Uh, but at this juncture, it's, you know, really incumbent on the, uh, project team, uh, to say, um, yes, go forth and prosper with this list or to add additional places, um, for us to do that, you know, survey of what other organizations pay for the same work. And I also mentioned, um, once again, that we're looking for the same work, not the same job titles. Because titles from one place to another can mean a little bit different in what's required for the position. So we wanna make sure we have, again, the apples-to-apples comparison. That's that other yardstick that, that we use in analyzing the data. And one of the things that, you know, the, um, kind of is a final product or, or results that, you know, the, uh, town should expect, um, as, as a result of this study is, um, similar to what I have here, and this is a public document, so I'm happy to certainly share with you that for the city of Bath, um, we did several years ago. The front page usually is covering, you know, a, a summary. Um, most people like to look at things as where we are overall, um, just to give a relative gauge on, on things. Um, but we also break it certainly down by departments and then later on by individual job titles. And that's what you see on the right-hand side there, that where every job title is broken out and showing what the twentieth percentile to the eightieth percentile of the market for, you know, each job title. So a complete understanding of, of the market. Um, so, and the reason why I bring that up is because while it may say one percent above market overall or, but each individual job title is looked at separately. So some of those may be, you know, substantially paid below where they should be or above. And, you know, the recommendation would be, you know, kind of adjustments for all of that. So in this case, there, they have two administrative assistants at that organization that, um, the market showing is that they are paying far better at, uh, the city of Bath than other places for that nature of that work. Now, there's extenuating circumstances in these two cases certainly. Um, and there's nothing specifically said, one, and, and then you see the admin assistants in this case, each one were looked at separately in this, for this organization. Uh, but whatever makes sense is, is what we end up doing. But we look at each and every job title, um, separately, um, and see what the individual markets are. And then we come back with the project team, um, to say, if you wanna start off with strategically being in the middle of the market for the group of comparators, and that's where I'm gonna say, close to a hundred percent of our clients start off with. Um, and then we give them a physical impact, you know, what would it cost to bring everybody into alignment? Um, from there, you know, it's then the strategic vision of the organization to say, we wanna be at the middle of the market or a little bit better, or the physical impact is too much. And, you know, we have to start lower and, or maybe bring things in to alignment over a course of a couple of years. Lots of different things, you know, down the road to, to discern, you know, where you end up at the end of the day. Um, but before we, you know, go down that path, um, need the data. Um, so that's where we are in this process. Um, again, the employees, um, uh, you know, were very participative in, in the briefing sessions to fill out the, you know, job questionnaires. Uh, we should be getting those back here relatively shortly. And then our goal would be to here, um, either this week or the beginning of next week to start sending out, you know, ideally, uh, external surveys to the list of comparators that are chosen. And with that, I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Questions from the board? Alice, do you have anything? Will we get a copy of this presentation?
Sure, we have a recording, and we can get a copy of the PowerPoint if you want it.
That would be awesome.
Yep.
No questions.
Tracy?
No.
I think I, at the point where I know I'm, I don't have any questions. I think I, at the point where I know I'm, I don't have any questions.
Okay, and I'll, I'll talk to you guys a little bit. One of the things that PayPoint HR really does that I, I liked a lot that we didn't get on a lot in here, but part of their final product, Karen is really good at the HR side of things. And she'll, she'll be meeting with employees and will also get feedback of them on, you know, what they feel about the workplace and the morale and things in the town. And I think that's important as well. So it's not just basic, here's what you should be paying people. It's here's some other factors of the employees that are either going really well or things that we could be working on as an organization. So I think that's a great point of this. We will be working to create more of a pay scale. I know we hit away with one in the past, but we'll be, we'll be working and bringing something back. So we have some either step and grade or something. So we, we have some, some matrix there to work with moving forward. And then other than that, I think working with the budget committee and the select board, we are going to have to have kind of that philosophical discussion sometime of where do we want to be compared to our competitors? And, and how do we want to make that look? And again, that goes back to those ratios of where do we want to be and how much can we afford to pay? And so it's, it's definitely a discussion to have. And then we can talk a little more when, when Rick's gone. But the three towns that really jumped out at me on the comparators thing that were not there were, the two main ones were Canaan and Hanover. Were not there.
Yes.
They were statistically taking off, but is that, I was thinking that was someone we wanted to add back, but I also wanted to talk with the group.
We lose a lot of employees to both those towns.
Sonoma was the other one, but we really haven't stolen employees or given them back. So I was thinking maybe statistically, we just leave them out since they're not a comparator.
There's a lot of late towns that are already listed that are comparators. So we might be okay without them. If you wanted them, I wouldn't object. But I think, you know, I saw Alton and Ware and a lot of places that, that have a lot of similar aspects. Was surprised to see Wolfboro. Because we know school tax wise, they are nothing like us. Because they pay very little percentage wise for school tax. Our people really suffer from.
Big list that's familiar with everybody had. Really, if we get them all back, we'll make a really good matrix that'll let us know where, but. Yeah, I agree. Unless anybody has anything else, I will work with Rick to add back in Hanover and Canaan.
That was why I wanted a copy of that to see if I could understand more about the rationale for who was included and who wasn't.
Yep. And he can explain that if you wanted, if he did a little bit, Rick, but it's
Sure.
Really data centric.
Yeah, I mean, he, I think he explained it fine. I, I didn't see Canaan and Hanover and I thought it, I thought it was, um, it jumped out at me.
Yeah, I think, well, we had this discussion and Rick can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Canaan's population was so much smaller that it kind of pushed them out.
Their household income would be lower too.
You know, Hanover's income levels, those types of things are so much higher and them statistically uncomparable.
Yeah. But I did like point that we should look at them because we do lose potential.
Was plant deal on that list?
I don't know.
I don't think we necessarily lose, like, just plant. They're statistically a matchup, okay. Because when we talk about like similar communities and what we're doing, we do talk about plant deal and grant them. Not as closely as we compare ourselves to Canaan and work among losing employees to Hanover.
Right, so, um. On screen again, apologize for that.
I just wanted to ask you a question. What I heard was a lot of comparisons, A, and it sounds like you are looking at a classification system, but are we only looking at pay? Are we looking at total compensation? Because obviously when you compare benefit packages, when you compare this town uses collective bargaining and this town doesn't. The take home amount is very different for employees. And I know at the state level, we, we've given up raises before to keep our health insurance where it's at. And I just didn't know if that's something when they look at total compensation, are we just looking at dollars?
Well, Rick will look at that and li- talked about that a little bit. I'll give him a minute, but we are asking questions about benefits and leave and all those things to try to do it. He can probably speak about it better than me, but comparing healthcare itself gets really difficult.
No, I just meant costed it not yet. Now we could, we could spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
The external survey that we send out is just honestly is a simple spreadsheet. And one of the tabs does cover benefits. Only thing that, you know, that we try to be is mindful of other people's time. Because we're asking people to fill this out. So we're not trying to make it exhaustive in, in general, just trying to get at the features that are of greatest importance to Enfield. And sometimes we, we've gone off the, different clients have asked questions on, you know, what HRS systems do you have? And anything can be asked. It's just, again, being mindful of, you know, we're asking people to, to, to help us out and, and fill out the questionnaire. But yes, benefits is one of the normal tabs with the biggest two questions. And this is what I've learned from Karen because she's the expert in all things benefits and on the HR side of things. Having been in the field since ninety-five and worked at multiple, you know, kind of companies and, and the like, tens of thousands of employees. But the, the big two questions relative benefits is, you know, what percentage of total compensation are you spending on benefits? So percentage wise, and that takes into consideration certainly the union versus non-union aspect of things where a, a more unionized workforce collectively overall will be at a, you know, higher benefit percentage typically, not exclusively. And that will show up in the numbers. We do that in an aggregate sense versus breaking it out by individually, you know, having multiple, you know, collective bargaining units sometimes. Simply because you can have so many of those agreements and then it's harder to draw the big picture. All right, where is Enfield compared overall relative to benefits? And where are, you know, you're allocating your tax dollars? Is it, you know, more on the benefit side or more on the, you know, salary side? And what's the appropriate, you know, mixture? And then, once you get, understand the big picture, then you can, you know, figure out how you want to apply, whether it's on between the non-union and the different collectively bargain, you know, agreements. That's the one big question. The other big question really is, you know, what is the, you know, out of pocket maximum for the different healthcare plans? That's one of the big drivers, you know. If you're hurt in an accident or have to be out, you know, what are you, what is going to really cost you at the bottom line? I mean, you can find all kinds of information about, you know, premiums and, you know, what's, you know, medications are on the list and it we've all seen those kinds of things and, you know, we blaze over it, just so many pages of information that's involved. But we're trying to get, you know, be most responsive to, A, taxpayers and then also on the employee side of things, you know, their bottom line kind of costs for, for things. So those are the kind of benefit questions. But there's, we've provided, you know, the project team a good page long list of things that we typically are asked. And then hopefully that list can be consolidated down to or in adjusted as appropriate to ask the questions that are, you know, most important to you. Now to your other question relative to the analysis of the different comparators. Very simple, straightforward. Really, a lot of this is census data and data from other sources. But it's consistent throughout. So it's not me picking something from one year and then for one town and another year from another town. It's all a, a single, you know, data set. So it's all like comparisons. So while the population for Enfield may be five people more or fifty people more, you know, now, or whatever the case may be. It's the same data set. So it's still going to be an apples to apples comparison. Only time where you can run into issues with this is if you have, and we've faced this in particular, we did a study for a community in Austin, Texas, where they've had, you know, explosive growth of population, you know, doubling in a five-year period of time in many of the cities around Austin, just crazy growth. So in their case, you know, having up to the minute almost, kind of statistical data is, is important. But, but having said that, so these are the factors that we looked at and that was kind of what was highlighted on that PowerPoint slide. We just go down and start, you know, recording for towns of relative, in cities of relatively similar size to Enfield, you know, what is the population? What is the median household price? What is the median household income? What's the cost of living? What's the unemployment rate? What's the labor force participation rate? And then just record all this information down for a tremendous number of cities here. There's the second page. And then we do some statistics to see, based on relative to where Enfield's at, you know, how many standard deviations are your way? So in the case of, and I will give the, go down to the third page. And this is part of the report that we would be providing this, providing Enfield. So again, some information that the, not only the project team's already seen, but, you know, elected officials and certainly also employees would, would have, you know, all the ingredients for, for, that were used in, in, in making this. So in this case, the example, we just looked at the population statistic, no- nothing fancy there. So it's comparing the population of Enfield versus Lebanon and it's subtract the two, divided by the standard deviation and to see how far away Lebanon is population wise relative to Enfield. And when it comes too large or too small, whichever the case may be, we just red flag and say, this is, you know, really different based on a socioeconomic factor alone. Now, as Ed was mentioning, you know, there's other ones that may pop up. And, you know, you may say, well, yes, they are identified as being based on one of those different categories, something a little bit different than Enfield, but we're losing a lot of people to them. So then it's, well, let's include it back in. And where we would include it back in, quite honestly, is this little section where I have a bunch of question marks in, you know, yellow. It's, they're added back in because the project teams, you know, has highlighted them to add back in. The biggest thing here is that, you know, A, we're transparent. And once the list of comparators are set, then that's what we go for, go with. We don't, you know, cherry pick, you know, the comparators later on based on the responses we, we get. We like these, we don't like these other ones or whatever the case may be, or even add additional ones. We want to have a, start off with, again, being transparent so that not only elected officials know the process, but also employees know the process and can believe that we're being, you know, transparent and above board. And then the last piece is always, you know, again, you can, you can position yourself, you know, strategically at, at the end. So the data set, there's no value of adjusting date, you know, the data that you use down the road, because you'll already have a mechanism for placement purposes. But that's the, that's the, and I can certainly, this information was shared with the project team. And at this juncture, there's, there's no real issues with this being, you know, shared as well. Happy to make that a public document.
Dan, I, no, you, okay. You're all set, okay. Are there any further questions or comments? For Rick?
Can you share the PowerPoint with the budget?
Yeah, I will, I'll send that along to Ed here right after I get off the camera, I guess it is.
Sounds good. Is, are there any of the folks online, I apologize, we've got so many screens going. Are there any trips to fence online who have a question or comments? Lisa's diligently looking to see, to see anything different. Okay. And I think we'd like to thank you for your time to stay here. Do you have anything for that?
Yeah, I just wanted to close with kind of the same transparency thing. The, you know, the, the data team has been me and Lisa and Elizabeth are accounting bookkeeper. And then we brought in department heads as well to help with some of these decisions. And then, you know, I wanted Rick to come here tonight to talk to the budget committee and select board. So especially on that comparator piece, if you guys had any comments, questions, concerns that we could, we could make sure that we have that list nailed down before we send out our surveys. You know, we want this to be open and transparent and data centric as possible. So we get the best information back that we can to make decisions.
I think just inter, as a community, if people aren't familiar with statistics or aren't comfortable with the language, they should feel free to either check in with you or, or one of us who has, has probably taken more statistics classes than we'd like. Because it is, it is not common language. It's not, you know, third grade, fourth grade reading level, which most documents you try to provide are. So it's kind of like legalese. If you need help understanding them, once you get them, please reach out as, I think to Ed would be.
Well, and I really like this from PayPoint HR. Again, transparency, I worked with them when I was in Claremont doing one, doing a compensation study. But, you know, I've done other ones in the past where it was kind of, who do you think we should compare to? And then you're using that gut feeling of who's around you. I like the statistical deviation to say, these are your comparative counts. And it's not you picking which ones it is. It's these are the ones that fit you. So I'm happy with that and I wanted you guys to get that out.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for joining us this evening and answering our questions.
Happy to. And I'll send over that PowerPoint. And do you also want the, the calculations for the comparators as well?
I would love it.
Okay. It makes for good reading material if you need, for having problems communicating this.
Some of us love these things. Okay, so I'd like to move on. We have a seventy-eight hundred dollar withdrawal from the cemetery maintenance expendable trust fund. For cemetery sign maintenance, you have a memo in your packet together with a set of minutes. So the quick overview, do you want to give that, Ed?
Yeah, I can give that. When we went through with the budget committee, we had decided to use some fund balance to do cemetery signs. As we continued to research and talk about this, we have a cemetery maintenance trust fund. That's really put aside for these types of projects. So instead of using fund balance, we talked with the the cemetery committee and the trustees. And we came to a decision and they voted unanimously to go ahead and use the money, seventy-eight hundred dollars. We did decide to go with PVC signs or they decided to instead of the wooden signs, which cost a little bit more. But if you guys go by the police department, that's a PVC sign out front. That's many years old and it looks almost brand new. So that's part of the reason we did that. And we would like to move forward and ask the select board for permission to spend seventy-eight hundred dollars for left cemetery maintenance expendable trust.
You'd like a motion?
I would.
I move that we authorize withdrawal in expenditure of up to seven thousand eight hundred dollars in the cemetery maintenance expendable trust fund for the purpose of replacing and repairing cemetery signs.
We have a second?
I'll say it.
Discussion.
I, I, what sort of fund is left for the cemetery trust fund at this point if we withdraw seventy-eight hundred?
I don't have it with me, but it's.
It's a lot. It's, okay, there are ample funds.
And it's a project long overdue.
It is, no question.
And are these funds that they set, they cycle in amounts as they collect?
Sale of cemetery lots.
Okay, so it's the overall, it's not just the stones or just. Yeah, I think it was a surprise when it came back to that much. And just so everyone's clear, because we have a memo in front of us. The, this is a request from the cemetery trustees. So they had gone out to bid and so this is a, a motion, a motion that they passed. Were agents to expect, I think.
Yes, your agents.
So that's why it's coming to us. Dan?
I, I find this short sighted to be very truthful about it. You put the, we said we were going to use undesignated funds. As somebody who was on Oak Grove's, you never have enough money in this. Because you're not selling that many lots. And you, you have to maintain all cemeteries. Not just new cemeteries. By state law, you have to maintain them. And I think we should be, I mean, we've told the townspeople, we're going to use undesigned for this year. Unless you're going to take that money and give it back to the taxpayer, then I just find this very short sighted to take it out of here. When we, we've said, we talked about this for three times, for a good hour, Tracy?
I did.
And said, we want to use undesigned funds for this, for this.
Maybe I'm misassuming that the five thousand, which was allocated through the budget committee, doesn't get returned to the general fund? And therefore would be left over.
Would never be taken out.
It would not be taken out of the fund balance. So it'd be there for.
All right, so when we audit, when we audit, the, the fund balance will be five thousand large. All right. So when we audit, when we audit, the, the fund balance will be five thousand larger than we had anticipated, all things being equal. Okay.
I, I guess this is one of those ones that's, for me, it's very hard because they, they have their own set of trustees, which they're not, they're not responsible to us in any way. They're duly elected by the voters. They've made a decision of what they want to do. And then it comes to us. We can't tell them what to do, but we have the money. So what happens?
Okay. See, and I, I took the conversation different. We were looking at some things that you could spend some down some fund balance. And we wanted to get the cemetery project done. I don't think it was, we want, we definitely just want to use fund balance for the cemetery money. This trust fund didn't even come up in that discussion.
They came to us asking.
It was a request of the budget committee to look at it. And the logical place that we saw was the undesigned fund balance.
That's what I mean. They came to us and said.
So I would just want to be sure that the five thousand goes back into the undesigned fund balance and therefore the bottom line will, will stay there and would be reviewed by the budget committee next year.
Yeah.
Maybe procedurally, just as a learning point for all of us, as folks in different departments are coming to us. You know, we say before we, you know, it's part of the budget process. And we talked about refining it because this is, you did your first year on fly with us and now we're in the refinement stage with operations. I think having that checked, like, do we have a fund that this could come from reasonably? Should we be taking it to do that process along the way? Uh, because, you know, I mean, I think none of us can remember all of the funds. Maybe Lisa can. I can't. But, um, I think maybe just saying the expectation when we're doing something over XR is that we check each time. I don't know. That's up to you in operations, how you do it. But I think it would help, like, the trustees, they're just, they're all relatively new.
Yeah, no, we brought this to them. We saw it and, you know, these are dedicated for cemetery maintenance only. And fund balance can be used for anything. So, you know, in the future with that five thousand dollars, if we needed a cemetery project, we could do that, or we could do it on any other project as well.
But let's keep Dan's point in mind. Cemeteries historically get themselves in a lot of trouble because they make promises for perpetual care, right? I hate to say it, not enough people are dying to keep this up.
We'll work on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
I think too, this goes back to our discussion about expectations and service level, right? Because we all know, if you walk in the cemeteries, perpetual care is not necessarily what has happened. You know, some of those older ones, there's just nothing you can do. There's not even, you can't tell who they are. So, um, you're never going to be able to do enough to save all of the things, but what's the expectation? And we can't help, the cemetery trustees are going to have to be the ones to decide that piece, right?
How aware were they when they made that decision of the five thousand dollars that we had?
They knew about it.
They knew.
Yeah.
But again, like, these are folks, like, everybody's volunteer on those committees and the, they, we'll do the best we can to educate people like you guys have done, but challenge, right? And, and they only have two folks right now. So if anybody wants to be cemetery trustee, run, put in your application. They're really fun crowd. I promise. They're one of our fun committees. Um, we have a motion and we have a second on the table. Is there any further discussion? Folks in person? Folks online? One, twice. Seeing no one unmuted, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions passes unanimously. Yeah. Uh, solid waste discussion.
So at the last meeting, we had a nice discussion about solid waste. Um, as we told you, we met with Casella, we actually met with them last Friday. Oh, no, Thursday was the Thursday. I think it was Thursday, we met with them before we sent your packet out. We did not have the numbers back. Then we did get these on Friday and we talked about them this morning. Um, nothing really surprising in here. The, the normal solid waste went up four percent, which is what we talked about when we talked with him on the contract for a, a minimum increase. Their minimum increases had been, I think they were in the two point five to three percent, but they've been, they've been falling behind. And with the inflation that we've had, they wanted a minimum of four. So we understood that going in and it was within our budgeted amount, uh, four percent. The part, if you turn to the back page, it talked about it a little bit, but they, um, they're moving everybody to the ACR or the average commodity revenue. So what that is, is an equation where zero sort goes up and down. Um, they've been bitten many times with a straight zero sort rate and then it goes over. Um, what they did say they would do for us is put a, put a cap for budgeting purposes. So we would know the highest that it would be able to go, but it'll still be able to fluctuate a little bit in there. Um, so I guess, long story short, these are within the numbers that we budgeted for this year. Casella is willing to extend, uh, five-year period. One thing we did talk about with him was extend it in January instead of expiring into July timeframe. So we believe it would be easier to budget on a full year cycle instead of trying to do half year cycles. So they'll either do a four and a half or a five and a half to get us to that area. Um, then we did have discussions as well as some different ways that we could be able to save some money. It's not going to be a lot of, lot of money, but there's some, there's some rear load dumpsters and things in town that they're bringing a truck in specific. And if we can work with them to negotiate a flat rate fee that we can add it, that they can, instead of just weighing our tons every time that they can add it to a commercial route they're already doing, it could lower some, some fees. So we're gonna, we're gonna talk through a few things like that. We're gonna look at some other ways and we'll talk with the select board. We made a recommendation to you last time on maybe some changes to multifamily property, some of those things. And as we continue to do those, they're more than willing to, to work with us and to make those changes to lower costs overall. But I was bringing these back to you. As we stated, I think they're within the realm of what we can do. And I would hope that, uh, the select board would authorize me to enter into a contract with Casella to extend our, our current contract.
Do you have questions or comments? See?
Who owns the reload dumpsters you just made reference to? Are they owned by the individual?
I think they're owned by Casella and a hundred percent sure, but it's a Casella route and they're owned by.
I understand that. I just want to be sure that the dumpsters aren't our responsibility for some reason that they need to be upgraded.
No, then they'll do, they'll do that. He was wanting to do the change up and he's really willing to work with us. The rear load's a separate truck, but it's also dangerous. They get a lot of employees that are hurt by the rear load trucks and he wants to get them all switched over. So he more than willing to work with us to, to make that a benefit on our behalf and.
And that'll be done at no expense to us then.
Yeah, no, it looks like it'll, it looks like it's going to work to our benefit to possibly reduce costs for the town.
Good. We talked about, the one suggestion I had made last time was the possibility of a sign with regard to enforcing the sticker requirement. So that people are aware that, and I'm not asking us to impose it on the employee base to look at everyone's car. But I think an obvious sign out front that indicates that somebody might be looking could possibly have a small effect on those people who don't have stickers and need to get them.
We'll be looking at changes to the transportation as well, but, you know, that's kind of outside this contract. All they do is.
I agree.
Pull our stuff and take it away. So.
Um, so on the average commodity revenue, because that's a market function. They're saying commodities shipped from that facility over the same month. So it's very hard to compare month over month in the actual month. So is a month trailing in arrears? Right? Like, that's always the question. Like, people will still say in the same month, but they're going to want to generate a bill. Are they going to wait another month to generate the bill? You see what I mean?
Yeah, their bill is monthly based on what they pull and the tonnage that they take from our facilities.
And we'll get the credit trailing once they've calculated.
Yeah, we'll get billed for what they're actually paying.
Okay. Yeah, it's always hard when you're doing, uh, commodity credit to. And this was what I asked upfront when we first established this contract. It was a real sticking point for me. Because we basically said yes to a contract that at the time was not beneficial, but we did it based on average commodity revenue because it was to the good. And while we ended up accidentally, I'm going to say by forces of market and China not taking things, ending up well, uh, we were not careful with the market factor last time. So I just want to make sure that we understand what kind of market factor we're setting ourselves.
Well, and my big concern was the, making sure that we had the capital. We didn't budget and then blow our budget out of the water. Except we would, we would be able to budget in that maximum range and then hopefully not spend it all.
Okay. Um, any further questions or comments from the board? Any from folks in here in front of us? Go ahead, Tim.
I just, I, you mentioned changes to the transfer station. And one of the things I, and I don't want to rant about the transfer station guys because I really like them and they're, they're polite. But I can tell you, at least half of those, the times this year, I've been in transfer station, I've seen sheetrock, carpet going in there. And I hate that those guys would have to be the police, but it's construction waste. And it's with a pickup truck with a logo on the side of it.
Yeah.
And you would never get away with that in most areas. And, and it does cost the, the, the people who are planning by the rules, more money.
Yeah.
And.
Yes.
For what it's worth. I, I mean, I, I.
That's right. We did have that discussion this week.
Yep. And I think we also discussed, is there a way that we can help educate citizens, be a vol, a voluntary list of folks who might come to your house and take it away? Here's how you get a Lebanon sticker. Or do we have a collection day where it's charged, but you could bring your whatever giant sofa? So I think there are things we can do that are a service that enable people to make better choices. Um, and we talked about exploring those kind of things because we also don't want to have like the permanent free pile beside the road.
Yeah.
So, right? Like, it's a balance. Do you want the permanent free pile? Do you want it? So how do we educate people to make good choices on how they?
Actually refrigerators, huh?
There's a sweet mailbox refrigerator up the road from me, but it's not in Enfield. Um, so are you guys, do you have more questions? Actually, I should, I'm sorry. I should ask the folks online. Oh, look, it's just Jim. Hey, Jim. So.
I have no questions.
Um, I would entertain a motion to.
I don't know if Jim had anything.
Jim, did you want to add anything? I know this is your favorite subject.
No, I think, I think Ed covered it well. And yeah, that's, so, I mean, you can do all the signs and all the education you want at the thing, but, you know, people have a funny relationship with their, with their waste and, uh, are always trying to sneak things into the compactors and so forth and, and, um, but, but yeah, I, I think this Casella contract is, is, um, you know, one that I, I think we can make work for us this year. It was always been tough to have the, the renewal be in the middle of the year because you don't really know what's going to happen. So it's difficult to budget for. And like Ed said, you know, going to a calendar year, I think is going to be a, a big improvement for us.
Definitely. I would entertain a motion. Want to tell us what it says?
Well, I think we just do, I know what we normally do. I didn't put it on there, but, uh, you had to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with Casella for the amounts that were listed in your paper. And to further authorize the town manager as a designated to execute all paperwork or, or all documents for.
I move that we do exactly that.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? I've seen none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. It passes unanimously. Flash day is my favorite day.
There is too.
You guys really have it tough down there. Thank you very much.
You can stay, Jim, for just a minute.
Because the next one is appoint Jim Taylor, advanced transit representative for terms to expire June first, two thousand twenty-six.
And Jim has agreed to do this.
I, I talked Jim into it at one time.
Yeah, I've, I've been on since two thousand and six. And so I think I'm the most senior member of the advanced transit board and, and they actually had.
Then you can ride them for free.
Then I, I move that we immediately appoint Jim Taylor as Enfield advanced transit board representative before he can get, uh, get out of the room.
Second without hesitation.
Okay. Um, is there any discuss, okay, seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Abstentions.
Tell me what you did on the fuss.
No, he was looking for someone to do it and.
Yeah.
I'm in a, or the town manager portion of the role on the Upper Valley region, planning. And so I talked him into this there.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
You can go now.
Take the bus.
This is rough. Okay. Acceptance of donations to Mascoma Lakeside Park Trust Fund in an amount of nine hundred and ninety dollars. In aggregate, I'd entertain a motion to accept the thanks.
Almost accept the thanks. Nine hundred and ninety dollars in aggregate to the Mascoma Lake.
So Lakeside Park Trust Fund.
Lakeside Park Trust.
Nailed it. We have a second?
All second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Abstentions passes unanimously. Okay. And that takes us, we have some administrative items. We have a tax abatement that's going to be signed that we discussed last time.
Yeah.
Timber tax warrant. And that brings us to public comment. Does anyone have any public comments? Right? Then I think we'll go into non-public session. Um, I would entertain a motion to go into non-public session pursuant to RSA ninety-one dash A colon three Roman numeral two.
L.
Oh, that's an L?
At the very end. And then I want to add.
I would say is Roman numeral two, small L, right?
Yes. And I want to add small A.
In small A.
We're going to talk about two different things.
Okay. You guys are welcome to hang out and come back.
Public so they know A is employee and L is to discuss legal advice.
Before we close the door, I would, um, I'm going to say a quick powder, right?
Absolutely.